Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Vader City Council, November 9th, 6 o'clock to order, 2017. Roll call, please.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Andy Wilson indicated he had a late appointment and that he may not be able to arrive in time, and it does not look like he arrived in time.
So that's considered excused?
It is considered excused.
Okay. Jason Daley?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Mr. Parsons also called in and said he wouldn't be able to attend.
Okay, so excused.
Mm-hmm.
Leona Sander Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
And Mayor Smith also contacted me that he would not be able to attend tonight. So he's excused.
Okay. Do you have a form?
All right. Pledge of allegiance. Leona, would you be with the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Joe, just tap on the microphone and make sure it's coming through. Okay. If it doesn't come through here, it won't.
There's a little bit.
As long as it comes. I just...
The mayor's report. I do not have anything to report. The mayor didn't provide anything to me. I would like to congratulate those, if it's not too early, who ran for reelection and who seemingly have won. Jason Daley, Leona Sander Hunter, Judy Costello, back up on the council again, myself, and Mike Parsons. So, it's your 2018 to the council. Council report. Anything from the council? All right. Agenda approval.
We are at this time looking for people to...that need food basket help for Thanksgiving. We're taking names for possible families down at the restaurant and at the store.
Is that for just Thanksgiving, or are you looking for Thanksgiving and possibly Christmas as well?
Both. As well, yeah.
Are you cooking it?
No.
No. I'm not putting my name in.
Any other reports? All right. Agenda approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? No? I'll make a motion to prove the agenda is written. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion and we approve the city council meeting minutes and workshop minutes for 10/26/2017 as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the council and workshop minutes from October 26, 2017. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Leona Sander Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval. Hopefully, we all got a chance to look at the vouchers. I think we did.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of November 2017 at $19,484.71.
We have a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sander Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
You've got your sheet, so...for the month of October, there was 284 contacts, 19 calls for service, 22 traffic stops, one infraction issued, and two misdemeanor arrests. There was four criminal cases, and let's see. The theft was cleared by an arrest. There's a burglary that's still under active investigation. There's a burglary that's been suspended, and then there's an assault DB that was cleared by an arrest. So...and then, just to let you know, scam information is coming again. So there's two scams that are coming through again. Of course, the IRS one. So if you get a call from the IRS, anytime you get a call from the IRS, that's a scam. IRS does not call people unless you have an active case that's working. They'll send you a certified letter in the mail to say that it's from the IRS, but they will never call you and ask you for money or anything like that. And then the other one is the...is what we call the jail bail deal, where they call and say that you have some relative that's in jail. Jails will never call you to ask you to bail somebody out, so...so just remember, if someone calls you and says, "Hey, you've got so-and-so in jail, your relative," and they want you to bail him out, it has to be the relative that calls. Like, our jail, if someone wants to be bailed out, they gotta call. They gotta call a bailman's and bail bondsman, and they gotta call you and his collect. So the jail does not call anybody to get somebody bailed out, so...just to be aware of those two, because those seem...the holiday season scams come around pretty good, pretty much, because people think that they're gonna give away money, so...questions?
Question?
I have one. What's the OFS, Sam?
That's that. Those calls occurred when somebody was not on shift.
Oh, okay.
So that's an off-shift call, is what it is.
Oh, okay.
So that's taken by us, no matter what, but that's what it is, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jason. Public comment.
Judy, you didn't mark if you wanted...Judy? I'm sorry. You didn't mark if you wanted the council meeting or the public hearing portion. Or...council, please. Council meeting, though. I'm sorry. So we have three.
Okay.
For the council meeting. First is Tanya Haybear.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Haybear, 411 Northeast First Street in Winlock. I wanted to talk to...tell everyone about the investigation that I did regarding the pending notice violation files. I came to the city and looked at all of the files that are pending. There were 16 of them, stemming from August 2016. A couple of them have been resolved; the majority of them are not resolved. There are voluntary compliance agreements signed on those, but the properties have not been cleaned up. There were no formal written complaints from anyone in the files, and I think...I really think that success is cleaning up the properties. So the fact that they had voluntary compliance agreements in the file really doesn't show much progress. The violations, in one of our fire meetings, we talked about violations not being notified to the landowners, that there was no violations on file. There were several. B Street had $465,000 in fines and fees. Property on G Street had $102,000 in fines and fees. F Street had $114,500 in fines and fees. And another on F Street has $323,000 in fines and fees. Those were letters that went out to the landowners. Those property values range anywhere from $22,000 to $72,000. And that really creates an encumbrance against the property, so that the landowner, if they wanted to just sell their property and get rid of it and let somebody else clean it up, they can't even do that. The city is, in effect, holding its citizens hostage instead of helping them to resolve the issues. And I really wanted to quickly just tell you some suggestions I thought about as I was looking through those files. Solutions could be, maybe the city could spend some money on quarterly cleanup and bring in some dumpsters or something, and every quarter, do yard waste cleanup. Maybe they could provide a list of contractors with the courtesy letters that are now going out, or a list, or phone number with the organizations like the Get Her Done Club that could help people maybe get their properties cleaned up, or give them some assistance in getting these things cleaned up. There's a possibility, maybe the city could bring in a metal recycler. Metal recycler could get money from that, and the city could also get maybe a percentage of that, and it would clean up their yards. And in the courtesy letters, maybe notifying them that there's a compost pile somewhere. This is where you have to go with your stuff. I mean, give them some type of suggestions for solutions as well. And I think with the new courtesy letters and working together, I think there's an option for cleaning it up.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Next.
Second is Judy Costello.
Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. Saturday, November 25th, at 5:00 PM, will be our community Christmas tree lighting event, and it will be in front of Mr. Andy Wilson's yard. He has the best Christmas displays in town, has had them for 40 years, and so we're opting this year to do it over at his house. Santa will be arriving, so bring your cameras for photo shoot with Santa, and we're thinking he may come via fire truck. The second thing is, for the month of December, there will be a hat, glove, and quilt donation box at the community center. Ruth, our local paramedic, will be coming and picking these items up and handing them out to homeless over the month of December and January. So if you have anybody who makes hats, crochets, any of that kind of thing, and you wanna drop these off to the community center, be happy to see that she gets them. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, certainly.
The hat, glove, and quilt, does that need to be new, or...
She said it could be either.
Okay. Just in good condition?
Yeah, just in good condition. And also for children and adults. We have a lot of homeless children, she said.
What time on the 25th, again, did you say?
5:00 PM.
No coats? Just quilts? No coats?
May I respond?
Yes.
I'm assuming that the coat closet and those type of organizations do that type of thing for the coats, clothing. She just suggested hats, gloves, and quilts or blankets.
All right. Thank you. Next.
Last, we have Doug Williams.
Douglas Williams, 626 G Street. First off, for some of you people, Lois Wilson, a former councilwoman, here, went into...went to the hospital on Halloween for shoulder surgery. She had a rough couple days, but she is now in good spirits, and she thanks everybody. She's got plenty of food now, so that's that. Okay. Several comments were made on the parking lot adjacent to the Church of God on 10/26/17. The speaker, Tracy Durham, said about the paving issue that an engineering study was done on the drainage for the street side of the lot. Does the city have a copy of this report? If not, why not? Because he said that the...the city...because that he installed culverts and covered them up 20 years ago does not give him ownership of the right of way. He also said he could paint the parking lot any way he wanted. He owns it, and he can decorate it to suit himself. He also painted the south side of 6th Street eastbound about halfway. This is not part of the parking lot, but gives the impression of it being part of the parking lot. This might lead to traffic congestion and unnecessary accidents. He also installed some bullrails or temporary parking buffers into the right of way. This creates a choke point in the road and a hazard to traffic that could result in an accident and subsequent lawsuit. The result of this lawsuit could result in the complainant owning the church and the town, and having the mayor and the city council working for them for the rest of their lives due to everybody knowing about the hazard and not doing anything about it. Last meeting, Councilman Mike Parsons volunteered to install a camera and recording system in City Hall. If we could, could we have a report on the progress of this project?
I don't have a report on that. Mr. Parsons is not here right now.
I noticed that. Could you relay the message to him?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. That's the end of public comment. City business. Item one, the public hearing for the preliminary draft 2018 budget. So as is required, we will need a motion to open the public hearing.
Do we need a time? How long we're gonna have this, or do we just open it up and then we just close it?
It's not required as part of the motion to open it, to save the time.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the preliminary draft 2018 budget.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Daley to open the public hearing for the preliminary draft 2018 budget. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Leona Sander Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing for the preliminary draft 2018 budget is now open at 6:18 PM. This is the members of the audience's time to discuss and suggest any budget items that you'd like to talk about.
Comments.
Comments.
Comments only. No one signed up on the public...sign up for the public hearing.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts or observations? Judy?
My thought would be, it would've been lovely if we could've had these before tonight and the meeting, so we could've had a thought. They were available yesterday at City Hall. If you wanted to come in and get them.
Anyone else? Their comments? All right.
I had a question. I feel like it'd be a question, but it's more of a clarification. With the deficits that are showing on the first page here, I don't know if there was a total amount somewhere that we needed to define how much we're actually short overall.
Look on page three. The backside of the second page.
Okay. If there are no further comments, perhaps the council would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I think...I'll make a motion that would close the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Sander Hunter to close the 2018 preliminary draft budget public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed at 6:21 PM. All right. Item two, council to discuss possible budget workshop dates. As fairly obvious, a number of the folks that sit on the council and the mayor are gone tonight, and the mayor did suggest that perhaps we can schedule a workshop to discuss the budget, perhaps prior to our next council meeting, an hour prior at 5:00. I believe that was a suggestion, wasn't it?
It was a suggestion.
I'm fine with me.
It's for me.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Um, it wouldn't hurt. I don't know if it's too quiet, but it wouldn't hurt.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve a workshop prior to the November 30th council meeting that will start at 5:00 to cover the budget for 2018.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda, council to consider resolution 17-2017, public participation plan for the Vader Comprehensive Plan update and report from the planning committee. This document was put together by our planning committee, and Scott Gross is here to give a presentation for it.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, how you doing?
Great.
Good to see you. At our last planning committee meeting, we did review the public participation plan for the city of Vader. It is part of the Growth Management Act and...or actually a requirement of it. My understanding is that we're asking you to accept it as it's written and move forward. Of course, you can make revisions if needed, and then a draft is going to be presented down the road. That will come back to us to...
Draft of the comprehensive plan, not the public participation plan. Just making that clear.
Okay. Yeah, I was a little confused when I read what I read, by looking at the conversation. Other than that, we're working on going through the comprehensive plan and doing updates and corrections, et cetera, to that. Our next meeting is next Thursday, and I don't actually know where we're at with...where we're going at that point, but we're working on getting everything together. Can that fix it?
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Joe?
Does council understand what that is? Do you need any explanation of what you're...
I don't have clue what you mean.
Okay. Let me try to explain it in a little bit more detail. So the comprehensive plan, again, is part of the Growth Management Act. Each city has to have a comprehensive plan required by the state, and as part of that, we have to do regular updates. Part of the update requirements are that we have a public participation plan, which is a plan that's set out by the city of how to include the public in the process of the comprehensive plan update. And so we have to adopt as part of our...as part of this project that we're doing, the comprehensive plan update, a strategy, I guess you can put it, to include the public. And so you see listed before you, the very last page is the public participation plan, and that's the steps that have been put together, that, as he mentioned, the planning committee has looked at it at least two different meetings and discussed it in those public meetings. And then at the last one, last month, they approved the plan and that they liked it and made recommendation that council would approve it, would officially approve it. And as the planning committee, they can't make official approvals. They can only make recommendations to the council. And so they've done the legwork for you. So if it looks good to you guys and you're happy with what the planning committee has presented, then you can approve the resolution. If you're not, you can make changes or send it back for revision.
Well, what types of things are they hoping the public will become involved in?
They just have to make them aware of the things that they're doing. So this is a...
Yeah.
This is if we'll put it in the paper, or we'll, you know, make these steps in order and bring it over.
So the public will just know what's...
So the public will know what's happening, and that they can come and be aware of those meetings and be involved, if they want to be involved, in the process to comment and, you know, make those kinds of...participate in that way.
Is this something new to the city, or is this better?
No. It's something that we've done before when we've done other comprehensive plan updates. It's just each time you do it, you have to adopt a fellow participation plan, and so it's just part of the process. In order to move forward, they have to have that adopted, so...
Okay. Thank you.
I've read it, and I would like to make a...I'd like to approve the resolution and adopt the fellow participation plan as written.
We have a motion from Mr. Daley to approve resolution 17-217 as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Leona Sander Hunter. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number four, council to discuss the overweight vehicle ordinance. In your packet is a copy of the ordinance that we requested the last council meeting. This is the one that was presented to us a while back, but we rejected it as too lengthy, so it is there for your review. I know Mike Parsons is always heavily involved in this, and he's not here tonight, so...but we could certainly discuss, add it to the next agenda as well, and discuss it some...
I've got an idea that I don't think that we've ever discussed, and that was...I think the reason that we...just to throw it out there, just for us to think about, the reason that this was put into effect is because of the logging, correct, that went out, you know, over on the other side of town. And we're all...we're all on the same page about bringing in loads to help out citizens and upkeep their place. Is there a way that we could just have, like, an oversized limit on going out of town?
I don't know. Legally, I...we would have to ask the attorney if that's something legally we could do, but we could definitely ask her. I think probably the simplest thing, in my opinion, would be to just raise the weight limit, so that, you know, smaller load like gravel trucks and things like that, but that...I mean, I think that would probably be the simplest way to do it.
Would the waivers cover that, though? I mean, if the citizens came in and...
Yeah, but if we raise the limit, then the...you wouldn't have to do the waiver. You could just do it, and it'd be just the big huge trucks, you know? I think one of the things that I...that the attorney had expressed to me previously is concerns about putting regulations on...and I don't know what the parameters are about it. We'd have to ask her and get more detail, but putting parameters on people because they were a resident or not a resident of the city, that it seemed like that was one of the things that she had mentioned, and I hope I'm quoting or stating this correctly, but that there are certain types of things that you can't discriminate people against, you know, because of that, like, whether you're a resident or not, you can't use that as a...as a line to draw that if you're not a resident, you have to pay it, but if you are a resident, you don't, kind of thing. And there were certain types of business...like, whether it's a business activity or residential or private activity, it seems to me that that was another one of the ones that she said, you can't really make that discrimination, at least not and have it stand up in court. So there's some types of things that you can draw the line on. The weight limit, you could. I don't know about the going out rather than coming in kind of thing. I don't know.
Right. Inside the box, I was just trying to...
Yeah, yeah. But we could definitely ask if that's a possibility.
I know there are a few streets that are rated for over 30,000 pounds, you know, like D Street, of course, that... Um, I know there are some, a few streets that are rated for over thirty thousand pounds, you know, like D Street, um, of course, Seven Street.
Seven Street is the only one in the ordinance that's not restricted in the way the ordinance is written now. Right now, everything else is restricted. Um, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't necessarily handle it, that's just the way the ordinance is. I think one thing that, that we found, um, this week that brought another thing to mind to me. Excuse me, and I don't know if it would, you know, play into this ordinance or not, but um, I had reports of some, of a truck bringing a, a half of a manufacturer home through town and the different things that they had to do because of the length and that they couldn't make a lot of the corners and that signs are having to be either removed or taken down and that a lot of trees and stuff were being hit and I thought, that's another thing with a truck of a certain weight is typically going to be of a certain size and length in order to carry that kind of weight. And so there's other things besides just its weight that could be affecting our streets. Um, it could be affecting our easements next off of the pavement as they, they have to go off of the pavement onto the dirt to make corners and things like that. So those are other things that you have to think about that could be affecting the city. Cause John got to do a lot of running around trying to fix signs and find out where the damage was and try to make it safe. And so, so those kind of things do affect our roads as well. That's just a thought that we hadn't talked about before, it hadn't ever occurred to me, but those are other things that affect our, our roadways. And um, anyways, just something to think about.
I, I still think it's fine for people to bring in, you know, it says here, um. To discuss the limited waivers, refer up to a free resident, residential household to bring in uh, materials to keep their property. I mean, I think we're all on the same page for that. I think the easiest way that, you know, you say is to, but the thing, have we talked to our engineers about will our roads handle going up to forty thousand pounds or?
Yeah, I haven't, but um, one, one of the things that we don't know is, we don't know how much our roads can handle. Unless we do the uh, type of study on each road where they do core samples and dig down a small core to see what the sub road is, you know, whatever's under the road. And then they can see what's down there for a certain length and then that, and then they can do their calculations, their magic that engineers do and come up with an idea of what can handle, of what those roads can handle. At this point, the way the ordinance is, um, and because the city doesn't know that on the majority of our roads, um, that it's up to whoever's driving the overweight truck, whoever's getting that permit. It's up to them to hire an engineer to do core studies on all the roads that they want to use and provide that information. And that's expensive. That's expensive, but that's what, what's had to happen previously. Because the city doesn't have the ability to, to do that or, or the funds to do it, at least not at this point. So the, the burden of that is on the person who wants to use, who wants to bring in the overweight. And so the way it's written, even somebody who wants to bring in a, a load of gravel would in theory have to do that. And it doesn't make sense, so as counsel understands as they're trying to crack this. But, but that's part of the problem is we don't really know what weights can be um, handled and what can't. Um, and the, the numbers that we have in there in that ordinance were just um, guidelines provided by our engineer when this ordinance was written a couple of years ago as to what's typical. What's typical for a town of our size, in his opinion. And so that's where, where the weight limits were set.
I can understand most of this if we had nice, nice roads, but most of our roads, I don't see how they could collapse anymore than they. I, I have a little red and blue focus and I almost lost it in a pothole on C Street the other day. I thought I was gonna have to have my husband pull me out. So, you know, how much more damage could you do to the road? I don't know, you know, I don't understand what we're trying to protect, I guess.
Well, I guess it's protecting, it, it's protecting the longevity, longevity of what we do have. Is keeping the ones that are somewhat decent and that have been paved recently from deteriorating faster because of loads that are, you know, over, overweight. So yeah, some of them are already pretty crummy, but some of them aren't too bad. And they'll last a lot longer and stay, stay decent a lot longer if we use just uh, resident, I don't know what the regular automobiles as opposed to super heavy trucks all the time. And like if you, if you see like in front of the fire department, if you ever go, go down that road, you'll see there's, there's circles where there's always potholes because that's right where the truck, those heavy, heavy trucks full of water pull out and they have to crank their wheels to get parked in and to get out. And you see exactly where that twisting motion causes holes in the ground. And so that's always the spot that, that needs a lot of attention. And so you can see the damage that heavy vehicles do over, over time.
We had a comment from the audience, would you like to hear it? Yes?
It's a question actually. I'm trying to understand how much of a problem this is or isn't. About, does anybody have a handle on how many big trucks, eighteen wheelers come through Vader and go on side streets with heavy loads or, or dump trucks that are very heavy?
Joe, do we, no one comes in, right?
People don't usually come tell us that. And so, so no, I mean, really, really, we don't. As far as, usually if there's an eighteen wheeler or something of that size, we usually, somebody usually come and, comes in and says, what's going on? Why is it, you know, something that, as far as a dump truck or something.
What do other towns of comparable size in this area do about it?
I don't know.
How do they, there, I don't want this roads to get worse and I know they are bad, but they could be worse. Anyway.
I don't know if any of our local cities have overweight vehicle limits or not. I know there are some in the, in the state that do.
Might not have to reinvent the wheel, I'm not saying it would work, but we could find out at least what other towns are doing.
Definitely need to discuss more on.
Well, I like that idea. I could, I could spend, oh, Mr. Williams.
Does anybody know what a, uh, a, a dump truck that's got a ten yard load of gravel weighs?
Didn't Mr. Durham, didn't he say?
Thousand pounds, thirty-three thousand pounds.
I thought, I thought last week he said it was, I thought he said fifty-nine.
Yeah, I think the truck itself empty is like in the twenty-five to thirty and then plus the load, yeah, I, I don't recall. We can look in our, though, I don't know if I wrote it in the, in the minute, but he said, I'm thinking it was in the fifty thousand pounds approximately.
Yeah, fifty-nine thousand, it's right in the minute.
Is that loaded?
Uh huh, yeah.
So in essence, then the permit would cost more than a load of rock, right?
That was his, that was his point, yeah. Well, I could, I could try to reach out to Winlock in Toledo and see if, if what ordinances they have for heavyweights. I could report back on that at the next meeting. I'm interested enough that I could get hold of them. Well, we've got all kinds of comments. Start with, start here, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Jason.
Jason.
Um, on the weight, on the weight distribution of a semi truck, it also depends on how many drop axes they have. It actually helps maintain the roads, cause it's more um, weight leveling. So I mean, if they have, if you have a, um, say a dump truck with only ten on axles and the front steer axle, it, it, it's gonna tear up the road because it's got a lot of weight on just two drive axles.
Distribution is what you're saying, weight, okay.
Yeah, so if you put some semi trucks, you see with, you know, twenty yard dump trucks or thirty yard, um, they have more uh, drop axles in front to help distribute that weight, so it doesn't tear up roads. So, I'm, I'm just saying, some, some, some trucks out there actually, you know, they try to maintain, or try to be better for the road, so.
That's a good observation. Mr. Williams?
I was uh, just thinking that uh, the occasional truck that comes in, into town with a load of gravel or cement or what have you. That's one thing, but when you get them every day, they're hauling gravel or something heavy. Uh, that, that's quite something, something else that uh, that frequency should have something to, to do with this, cause like Joe was saying about in front of the uh, fire department. Well, that, that's heavy use there. Whereas they don't do that in front of my house on, on G Street. They, they, they'll probably just drive past it, so.
Yeah. Scott had one, one comment.
I just wondered, when they put the roads in and they engineered everything, isn't there, weren't there weight limits that were put in place based on what the road?
You assume that they were engineered. The only ones I'm aware of that have actually been engineered.
Don't laugh at me.
I believe the work that they did on part of D Street and on Eighth Street, when the state paid for that, I believe they require engineering to be done. However, I've yet to find that engineering information. I know the state funded A Street project that we're doing, they require plenty of funding. Those are the only ones that I'm aware of. I, that doesn't mean other ones hadn't been engineered in the past, possibly they have, but we have no records of any of that. And, and I know some of the most recent paving projects, at least since I've been here in two thousand and ten is when I started, that none of those projects have gone through engineers. So it's just been straight overlay. So we don't really know what's under a lot of them. But, but I'm sorry, can I make that a comment on, um, now I'm just trying to remember. Oh, I was gonna say, you might be interested to come in and, um, we have a file for, we did have that logging project that happened, I think it was a year and a half or so ago. We do have before and after pictures, um, taken by the engineers and they evaluated the amount of damage that was done and, and that kind of stuff. I don't know if it would be interesting for you to come and see what it looks like when you have those repetitive big, heavy loads that go multiple times a day and to see, see what kind of damage you're looking at. The city's not required to have this ordinance. Um, it's just an effort to, to protect our streets and to have those who really do these heavy, heavy use type things to help fund when we do need to repair. Because it does, it does have an effect on the streets to do that. So, um, you know, having those with heavy use help to fund the street repairs that need to be done. Made sense, I guess, to the council when, when they passed this ordinance. And, and there's been an ordinance on the books for many, 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 many years. It was just updated in two thousand and fourteen to make it uh, more current and defensible, so. But you're not required to have it, you could have, not have the weight limits at all. You could choose that.
Judy had one, her comment.
I was just questioning, do we have any, any logging left?
There's always the next time. And that's like, that's what, what, that's what.
This originally was updated.
That's what this stemmed from, yeah, it was because we knew that was coming.
Project and all of that going on. I was just kinda thinking, maybe it's something that could just kinda go over here and be sitting for when those types of things occur, rather than all of the day-to-day stuff.
Make it commercial, commercial use that.
Yeah, make it a commercial use kind of thing, suggestion.
Well, do we want to table this until the next meeting when we have some more folks here? And then I will also, uh, I will also see what the, what other local cities have, um, if they have anything at all. Does that sound, sound reasonable? Okay.
Was, was, I'm sorry, was there anything else you needed me to check on? That you wanted me to specifically check on so that we could have it for the next meetings? We talked about a couple of different things. Jason was talking about possibly, what was it that he said?
Outgoing, kind of like, just, you know, just kind of a, to uh, you know, cause it was for a logging.
Going out instead of, yeah, that's what it was.
Kind of an outside the box kind of thought.
How did they get in?
Well, they came in unloaded and then they went out loaded.
Came in empty and went out loaded.
What if they come in loaded and go out empty?
Oh yeah, huh, how about that, Jason?
Alright. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Uh, item five. Counsel to discuss code enforcement options. Um, I believe we were provided with a.
I gave that to you on your desk there, cause it just came with.
Yeah, did I? Do you like to talk about it?
Email, sure, I'd be happy to. It's a copy of an email from Les Townsend. It was sitting on your, at your space, just like this. Yeah, so council had asked at the last, I don't remember if it was during the workshop or, or, or during the meeting, but you'd asked about, um, how much would it cost to have Les Townsend at the reduced rate of sixty dollars an hour um, due a code violation? And this was his response. Um, he said his cost would include the trip for the initial investigation, uh, time for preparing a violation notice and the review with the attorney that he would have to do on earth. Um, it would include a trip to the city for follow-up compliance, which means if there were any inspections after, would, there needs to be at least one inspection after the fact, uh, to verify compliance. And he said that would work out to be about five hundred dollars for one. He's, he's estimating. Um, he said any additional trips or any additional work or, um, would be in addition. So. Just the travel time alone, he quoted to there and back would be a hundred and eighty-eight dollars, just to have him drive out to our city and drive back.
Where's he located?
Lacey.
We can't find anybody close to him.
That's the big question, that's always the big question. He's the one.
Winlock, you someone from?
Winlock's hiring him. Last we heard, they were hiring him. And a lot, um, Toledo uses the county, um, but the county, uh, Winlock said that the county told them that they won't take on any more cities, they don't, they've got too much already. And so they, they wouldn't take Winlock on when they asked, so. Whether we can find somebody, when we, when we did our, um, our proposal initially to hire a building official, we got almost no response. We kind of tracked this guy down and found him and he gave us a proposal.
On the upside, um, after the two courtesy letters and they get her done, we're not gonna need you much anyway, so.
That's right, that's, that is, that is another option. Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to see how, how that works and see how well it works.
It'll work.
Awesome, that's what I'm looking forward to.
Officer Keats, do you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, since you're doing all of our services, you might check with the county again because I know I've already mentioned that our code compliance is willing to do some of your hope vehicles and some other stuff.
Yeah.
And I know that the sheriff has made this agreement for next year and prosecutors, if it's all going through the county, I would think that they might do this too.
We're not Winlock.
Yeah, since you already have, have this amount of accounting services, I'm sure the code compliance is coming to the same deal. Cause our code compliance and us work the same way, you know, pretty much together on a lot of things, so.
I think what we would have to end up doing is, is having them take over our permitting again and council did not want to do that previously. So I don't know if they.
Our code, code compliance is different than the permitting.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We could check on that.
Interesting.
Always worth it, phone call.
That would be great to find, if it is, if they can, uh, separate those two services. That's news to us, right?
Yeah.
Another comment, Jason?
Yes, um, my actual, my uncle Smokey Padgett, he's all the code enforcement for Lewis County and he's also a reserve deputy sheriff. And uh, he was telling me not too long ago that he, uh, in fact, I think he was the one at the, one of the council meetings, I wasn't here. Um, he said that he was, um, willing to help, you know, doing code enforcement here in this town, so. Maybe just give him a shot, I don't know. Maybe at that time, they were having issues, you know, you guys called. Cause I know there's been a lot of, you know, take back on them, but they, they might be willing to try to, you know, it'd be worth a try.
Always worth the phone call, so.
All right. Howie?
I was wondering if this is a service that the county, if they supply or for a trip, they tend to this for Winlock. Why wouldn't they do it for us? Because we say the same, we pay the same property taxes according to, you know.
They won't do it for Winlock.
They would.
They will, but they do it for who?
Toledo. But they do Toledo because they do their permitting and they have done, been doing that for a long time.
The permit?
Yeah. That's why we're gonna check and see if they would, if we separated.
I just wondered, when you originally looked for a building inspector, did you put an ad in the newspaper or did you like?
We put an ad in several papers and on some online websites and.
Indeed.com or one of those types of.
Something like, I don't remember what they were specifically, but yeah. I don't know if we just didn't advertise in the right place or if people weren't interested in it, I don't know. But we got very, very little feedback.
Overall, we've been really happy with this company's service and their rates overall have been, have been really reasonable, we found. But there's always an ability to save money if we can find something cheaper, so. Okay, so we'll look into the county.
Do you have five hundred dollars for the first violation?
Do we have any other direction tonight?
Jason, I think you should get a code enforcement license or whatever is needed because if you knocked on somebody's door and said, you need to do this, they're gonna do it, they're gonna make you.
Wouldn't be your sparkly personality. Gosh darn, he better do it.
I want you to get this cleaned up here.
Jason's mad.
And this is your courtesy letter.
Oh, my goodness.
I think he and Mr. Parsons would make a team, the two of them showing up at your door.
I believe Vader would really have a reputation.
A different reputation.
Yeah, I think, I don't think that's in code enforcement, I think that's stronger.
You're sending them a very like courtesy letter. Give them a smile while it's all done. Thank you for your time.
All right. Do we have more discussion on this tonight or should we add it to the council meeting again for next week and follow up on these other items?
Yes.
Okay, sounds great. Item six, council was to consider the update on the limb disposal bid. So, there is another letter in here. Joe, would you like to talk about this?
It's pretty self-explanatory. Mike Parsons told us at the last meeting that he had contacted this company and we are waiting for a, for a response from them on removing all the limbs that are down at the waste treatment plant now. The gentleman was interested in the excavator, which is in pieces. He provided an estimate stating that he would, with, he would remove all the limbs and he would only charge us $1,000 if we gave him the excavator as well. So, I sent him back an email that said, okay, how much without the excavator? Cause I thought, I don't know, maybe it'd be 1,200. I don't know. He said 6,500. So, basically, he's willing to give us $5,500 worth of value for the broken excavator. This is just one option. I don't know if he got one.
I think it's a great option, actually.
It's a good option.
Budget-wise, are we, where are we looking for funds on?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know. I haven't really looked at it. I guess we'd have to look at it. I don't wanna try and look for it right this second.
Right.
Have it look for it. But if you're interested in that.
I think that's a great option. I, I am very interested in that. So, we can get that cleaned up, maybe even open back up for our community to use.
Yes.
Is there a requirement that this is public property that go public option? Disposing of public property?
And we have done that before in the past.
Disposing of, it's already been surplus.
So, it's surplus already?
Yes.
Oh, maybe that's later.
I'm, I, if I recall, I can check, I can double check, but it seems that it's only, it's only a requirement if it's stated in our policies that surplus has to be disposed of in that way. If it doesn't state that, then it's not required. Now, there, I don't know if there's like a dollar threshold where it might trigger that. I've never checked on that, actually, I've never tried to sell something that's that expensive yet.
We had the police car.
Oh, yeah, that's true. So, I'm not sure, we, we have, it would be smart to check in on that and just double check and make sure we're doing it correctly, but that'd be part of the work.
Yeah. All right. Judy?
What is the plan after we clean it up? Start it all over again, so we don't have another excavator to pray?
Guess that would be up to you, wouldn't it?
Oh, okay.
One thing at a time here, but.
Well, I'm just feared because there's a lot of limbs out there to be delivered the minute that's all emptied. And it could get filled up really quick, really fast and.
Yeah, definitely something to consider so we don't get in the same situation again.
Open it up the day before.
Jason?
Depending on the size of the excavator, just, just a thought, have you guys tried to maybe advertise it? Because you might be surprised, you might actually gain more off of selling it outright.
We haven't, we haven't tried to advertise it at all.
Because, I mean, equipment, it's, it's.
We found one that was for sale, that was the, I believe, almost the exact same excavator, but it was running and that was 14,000. I don't know if that was a reasonable price. I don't know what that means for one that's broken.
We've had it for a long time and it's been problematic. They've got it fixed and it runs for two hours, an hour maybe, and then it breaks down again.
Hydroils or everything?
It's the head. It, it overheats, it's the cooling system and the head. I, I don't know, I don't know if it dries up because it sits for a while between use. I don't know.
I was gonna say, you guys using the same head bolts? Cause those are stretch bolts and.
I can't answer that. They, they did not do a complete replacement. When they, they did pull the head off and they had it machined and all that and new parts and put back together and it ran great for, like you said, a couple of hours. And then it happened again the second time we used it, it overheated again. So, we, anyway, you can talk to the public works guys if you think you might know how to fix it.
Yeah, cause there's gotta be a reason why it overheated.
I know, I know. They were saying, well, maybe we just have to do a whole whatever. I don't even know what the term is, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't explain it to you, cause I don't know.
Is this the same person that Parsons was going through with the belly dump thing or?
Yeah, this is the belly grinder guy. I believe it's the same person, I don't.
Mr. Williams?
Question. You, you, you sell the, the excavator, what's the, whatever, you don't have it anymore. What are you replacing it with or are you replacing it?
We haven't had one for quite some time and the times we have discussed needing one, we've, we've looked into renting one on as-needed basis.
And we've also talked about getting an implement for the tractor too, for, as a backhoe, something in the future, something, cause we don't use one very often, but we do have used.
The, the public works employee said that he would use it regularly if it was running. He said it would help significantly with the storm, the ditches and keeping those clean because they have to be cleaned out and scraped out on a regular basis and he's never been able to do that because it's never run. And so, the only thing they've been able to use it for is for pulling those limbs out and, you know, breaking them up because they can't really use it for very long or take it anywhere because it just overheats, so. And we've checked into getting a backhoe attachment for the tractor and it was determined that those are a piece of junk and that's why we got rid of the one that we had before and so that it wouldn't really be worth the value. But, I mean, the, the public works employee would like to get it working properly. He would love to have it and be able to actually do some, some good with it. But whether we actually need it in order to do that, I don't know. I don't know how much time it would take for him to do that work. I don't know if it would be more cost-effective to rent something during that time, you know, for a couple of days, you know, a year so that he can do that kind of work or, I don't know, we haven't checked into any of that.
May I add one other thing? It may be prudent to get other bids to haul the brush away because the bids may be $1,000. Probably cost. We wouldn't know if we didn't have any other bids.
Well, you know, they're gonna make money on the chips anyway, so whoever comes and gets it, they're gonna make money when they chip it all up.
You could rent a chipper and make your own mulch.
We discussed that.
Have you seen the size of the pile?
Right.
And that's the problem is that we don't have the excavator working to be able to pull a pile apart so that we could get one limb at a time to, to limb. That's part of the problem. In the past, when we've done those projects, we've had the excavator at least running for a short period of time so that we could break up those piles because those piles just get so heavy. And now it's just ridiculously enormous. So, we'd need an industrial-sized chipper to get through all of that and the amount of time it would take. We had a crew, I think of four or five people on a, on a volunteer day come down and help work on, we had two chippers at that time.
Yeah, we did.
That we were using to try to get through and we didn't even get all the way through, we got through the majority of it. And that was much smaller than what we have now. So, I don't know, I mean, it's still a possibility if we just set up a plan and every month, we had a couple of hours and, but, you know, that's up to council if that's how they wanna handle it.
All right. Jason, one more.
I don't have, I, I've only have one problem with the city. We all know what that is. Anyway. It, it's, it's, you know, I still live here, I still care about this town, you know, I, I do. And I, I, I can, I'd like to help, you know? And I know some logging companies aren't really big, like, well, it's like, like ten hours in them. I could talk to them about, you know, I, I could see prices. I can, you know, get prices for you guys, for you guys, you know, and see what I can do. Also, I mean, I, I live in this town, I care about this town. It's just, you know, a little issue with the town, but.
Prices on?
We're getting rid of the, oh, getting rid of the pile down there. As for the excavator, I mean, I'd, I'd like to talk to public works because, I mean, I could pretty much walk somebody through the, the heavy equipment stuff, just tell them, you've already had the head machined, you don't need to do it again, it's heavy equipment. It's probably a thermostat, a water pump, something simple.
We replaced all of those as well, so, yeah, I don't, yeah.
Well, if you want to be involved with that, done.
I, I would be happy to help, I just, you know, I mean.
That's what we're all here to do.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have my issue, but that's just that. But it's, that's only that. I still care about this town, I live in this town, you know, I don't want enemies in this town. Everybody's got problems with something, you know, but I, I wanna help the town.
Great. All right, thank you.
We would definitely accept any bids that were given to us and we, you know, we contact with them or, or even just ideas, even who to call. Cause that's been a lot of the question is, who do we even call? The people that I've reached out to either haven't called me back.
Don't get big companies, don't, don't get big logging companies. Get the other ones that aren't busy all the time. Like Tim Bowers out there, in between Winlock and Nappalvine, personally isn't all that big. He's right here off of what, Comerdote?
Yeah.
Right off of Comerdote. I mean, they're, they're pretty much local. And, I mean, even Swanson out of Toledo, you know, he's still got some equipment, so.
Great, will you do that then? Or you?
Yeah.
Talk to John about the, about the equipment and see if you can find anybody that.
What time do you guys open your public works? Cause I go to work nine, she's there.
He's here, he's here from eight to three, pretty much, Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
So, he'll be around.
Yeah, you always see him running around.
Great, all right, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Anything else tonight on the limb disposal? Okay. Last on the agenda, item seven.
Are we gonna get more bids on that though? Like a piece of desk over here, get more bids on this so that we, we make sure that.
Jason was gonna help us.
That was all part of that. Thank you. Item seven, council to consider storm drain sewer line maintenance equipment purchase. So, if you recall, at the last meeting, the mayor announced that we got a $5,000 grant from our insurance company for storm water, or storm drain and line maintenance equipment purchases. And we directed Jill to and the mayor to put together some ideas. And in here, some of the equipment that we could get would be high-powered pressure washers and the sewer jetter kits so that our public works employee could actually clean out our storm water. So, that was, that was part of it. Joe, did you wanna talk about anything?
Just the, what we presented to the insurance company who's, who provide this $5,000 grant, they're, they're trying to control risk and so anything that they can do to help us keep our risk level down is good. So, not having floods in our streets, especially ones that go in people's yards and houses is a good thing. So, when they saw this project that we've been working on storm drain stuff and that we needed to do some cleaning and no maintenance had been done on them really for several years, they were, they jumped on it real quick and said, yeah, yeah, we'll give you the 5,000. What we presented to them was a list of projects that council has seen over the past, you know, several months, that those are the projects that we were looking at. And we gave them this cost estimate that you have in your packet of what we estimate it would be to do some rentals and then also a purchase, some purchase of that pressure, pressure washer and the jetter kit with the cutting nozzles and all that stuff that can cut through roots and, and clean some of that out. So, they were really excited about that. So, the idea is that, you know, we use some of that money for making that purchase and then that way, we can not only work on these projects, but John would be able to continue to do regular maintenance instead of, you know, waiting till something bad happens. And so, but that he would also be able to use it on sewer drains and storm drains if needed. So, what we're presenting here to you is that we need to make a purchase, but we need to get council approval in order to make a purchase in this amount. The grant, we kinda were a last-minute applicant. The grant closes November 30th, so the last day of this month, which means that we have to have all of our invoices in to get the money by November 30th. So, we, this is our only option, this council meeting is our only option to approve the purchases and the expenditure of that $5,000. So, what I am asking for from council is to approve the purchase of one of these pressure washers and the jetter kit and then to approve using the remaining, remainder of the $5,000 grant dollars for purchasing culvert supplies or whatever other supplies or, we'd also talked about getting the TV work done on that storm drain line headed down towards Ananen Road. We could spend it on that, but if we can get council to approve the expenditure of that $5,000 for these specific storm drain projects that have been listed in our, our list, then, then I can get the expenditures taken care of and we can get the money. If we aren't able to do that, then, then we pretty much just lose the grant for whatever invoices we can't, can't spend.
But the grant will also cover the rental of equipment to dig the ditches out?
Yeah, it'll basically cover any of the work that we do in those projects that we had listed. So, that it would cover the equipment here and, you know, approximately 3,000 to 2,500, depending on which option you guys choose here, of the remaining grant fund, we can use towards whatever we need to for those storm drain projects, buying parts or, or paying for somebody to come and do that TV work, a professional, even though it's gonna be expensive, which is why we haven't done it so far. But with the grant money, we could have someone who could really get in there and get, take good pictures and, and go through and really find out what's going on.
So, the question is, is it the pressure washer?
The aluminum?
Yeah, there's two options here and I have no clue which one's better than the other. One's much more expensive than the other, well, about $600 more than the other, but, cause the stainless one is cheaper. Didn't make sense to us, so.
Yeah, I looked into both of, I looked, I spent a lot more time on pressure washers today than I, than I thought I would, yesterday. That, uh, that Simpson model, uh, it's more expensive. It's a belt drive instead of a direct drive and so it has a much longer, uh, expected life on it. It's for, um, it's for like constant all-day commercial use. So less heat vibration, maybe a longer life out of it. And so that's, that's why, and it has a better pump on it as well. The, the cat pump is a, is a, is a higher quality pump than the other one. So it's a, it's a, it's worth, it's worth the extra cost. And I found it at Home Depot for a hundred dollars less than what's quoted on here. Jason?
The, the only reason I was saying stainless steel is, um, storage reasons. If, let's say I, there's a lot going on Vader and you store the, um, pressure washer and you don't drain it, with it being aluminum, it's going to crack. And then it's going to be a problem because if you got a broken pump and parts and you got to replace it, stainless steel, it, it'll freeze, but it won't do any damage.
It's just the, it's, the aluminum part is just the, just the frame.
Just the frame?
Yeah. It's just the frame. The pump is, the, the pump impeller is all brass and, and some...
Fancy stuff.
Yeah, it's...
Would you show him the paperwork? Could you get the bottom?
Howie?
Yeah, it, it puts out the same amount of water per minute, same pressure. Uh, longevity is, is kind of what we were talking about earlier, you know, we're always quick to, we'll provide the cheapest, cheapest one we can get, um, as those grant funds.
Yeah.
That's the one that's going to last the city the longest that it can last.
We had one comment from...
Well, I, what Mr. Jason just said was kind of what I was going to say. It's grant money, okay? So let's get the best that we can as far as durability goes because we may not get a grant again for this. I, I think we'd be penny wise as all the foolish.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you that the people that love pressure washers say that belt-drive ones are the way to go. And that's the Simpson one is. There are some people that love pressure washers.
I'd stay home too. I, I would have gone the rest of my life, but no.
Anyway, so that's the, the pressure, that's, there's two parts to that. There's the pressure washer and then there's also the sewer, uh, the sewer jet kit. And, um, the, that comes with a, a two-hundred-foot hose and that hose itself, if you were to buy it separately, is half the price of that kit, uh, that four-thousand PSI hose. So the prices that we have there are all, are all fair as far as that equipment is concerned.
It's good that it's on the hens, easy for your friends to carry their stoves.
Yeah. So would you like multiple motions?
Um, you could do it all in one motion if you want to just word it that way, cram it all in there.
You're, you're the best at it.
And you can get all the research.
See what you get.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, expend the five thousand dollar grant funds from, um, RMSC, um, on the Simpson forty-two-hundred PSI, um, pressure washer, the sewer jetter kit from PW Mall and the TV work on the, is it Seventh Street? It's a Seventh Street?
Yeah.
And the TV work on Seventh Street and to, uh, utilize the remaining funds on, um, construction equipment, um, parts such as culverts and other, uh, fittings necessary.
Shovels.
To complete our projects that we have listed.
Awesome. That's a great motion. Good job.
Not too grand, but do you have a second?
One second.
Seconded, Miss Sandra Hunter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
We'll wrap it up in a big bow and give it to John. It'll be like Christmas for him. He'll be so excited.
That is the last item on the agenda for tonight. I'll close this meeting out. Thank you for attending.[1765.88]